Wow. It's very pretty. Yeah. Oh, yeah. After meeting Magic? I don't know who these people are. Oh, it's Rex's. It's Rex's son. I can't believe Tom Stewart isn't here to get sworn in. What the... I know. I cannot believe it. All right, if you'll stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Call this meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
Christiansen.
Here.
Mills.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Kentrell.
Here.
Thank you. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, can we approve the agenda, please?
I'll make the motion.
Matt moves.
I'll second it.
Warren seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you. At this time, we set aside a few moments for anyone in the audience that would like to come up and say a few words. You have two or three minutes. If you just come to the podium and state your name and your address. No one? Oh, geez.
Good evening, my name is Jake Glatchel at 728th Avenue Northeast. First of all, I'd like to, uh... Glad to thank the mayor for what she's done for O'Wine. She's had a great job. She's had a great council. The new mayor has big shoes to fill. I know the citizens of O'Wine have appreciated the direction that O'Wine's been going for the last couple of years. Obviously, the mayor can't take all the credit. She's got a very good council, a very progressive council. Thank you for that. I'm guessing the new mayor has no idea what he's getting into. But I hope that he's as open and accessible as Peggy's been. Her phone number is in the book. And I hope the new mayor publishes his phone number so that all his constituents can know that. And he can get the phone calls that Peggy's been getting for a long time. The rental cleanup has been a big improvement for our city. And again, I think the residents of O'Wine have really appreciated the council's direction. It's for the best for the city, and I hope it continues. I hope our new mayor doesn't try to reverse that progress. And last of all, Peggy, I'm very proud of you. Perhaps now you'll get your life back.
Thank you, Jake. Some of you don't know, that's my partner. Anyone else want to come up and make me cry? I said I wasn't gonna do that today. All right. Oh, Deb.
Stop.
Okay.
Deb Howard, 1320 Isaac Gavney Beesleton. I am the economic development director and chamber director, and I've had the pleasure of working with Peggy and all of you that are leaving. I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. It's great to have support and people who believe in things that we're trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. We appreciate it. All right, moving on. The consent agenda. Consideration of a motion approving the December 9 council minutes. Claims resolution the amount of $982,565.37. Consideration of a Class B wine permit renewal for the O'Wine Family Pharmacy. Consideration of a motion authorizing beer and wine tasting at the O'Wine Public Library Chocolate Festival, February 14. Consideration of a motion approving our pay request number one in the amount of $69,463.98 to Mott Construction for work that was completed on the Wings Park Trail Improvement Project. Consideration of a motion approving a pay request number two for Mott Construction in the amount of $74,151.81 for work completed on the Wings Park Trail Improvement Project. And consideration of a motion approving pay request 15 to Ports and Construction in the amount of $10,488.1 for work completed on Disinfecting and the 42 Well Improvement Project. Anybody have any questions regarding that? If not, call for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Matt moves.
I'll second it.
Warren seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Now, we're going to open a public hearing on the proposed plans and specifications, form of contract, and estimate of costs for O'Wine Street Department Building Addition and Rehabilitation Project. Mr. Kane, it's our utility superintendent. Go ahead.
This hearing's on the street department expansion and rebuilding of the town. It has a $229,000 estimated cost. This project consists of the building addition with two alternatives. This would be a free span steel beam, or alternate one, a post beam, a 24-foot by 60-foot addition to the south end of the existing street shop. This addition will include a white 12-foot, 2-inch by 14-foot-high overhead door with industrial opener/operator, installation of new steel intergole from the new addition, and replacement of three entry doors and frames throughout the existing building. It shall use a new blue in color commercial-grade 26-gauge side steel sheeting applied vertically, also new white commercial-grade 26-gauge trim and rough sheeting with snow stop along the entire structure. This would be a heated addition, and therefore would require an R-19 silver coat insulation or alternative to a closed cell spray foam insulation equivalent in the walls and an R-30 in the ceiling. The steel beam construction, the addition would require supports and frost puddings engineered. The addition flooring shall be cemented with floor drain and cement overhead door threshold puddings. There are two options. Option A, removal and replacement of existing rough steel, trim, insulation eaves and downspouts. All material and colors are to match new addition. Snow stops should be installed along the entire structure. Option B, removal and replacement of existing exterior side steel trim and insulation. All material and colors to match new addition. This project's flooded through the Donaldson sale, road user tax, and water funds.
Counsel, any questions or comments for Mr. Kane?
How much money's gonna come out of the road user fund?
We'll take around $70,000 from the Donaldson sale, and then split the rest, road user and water funds.
Any other question? It is a public hearing. Are there any written comments that came in?
There are no written comments.
Does anybody in the audience have any comments? Hearing none, close the public hearing. Thank you, Vic. Number nine, consideration of an ordinance amending Section 22 to 92 Parking in Residential Areas and Section 22 to 94 Prohibited Parking. And this is the first reading. Counsel, have any questions regarding this?
No, I had several people contacting me, you know, about why we're doing it, but they also had a lot of people that were happy we were doing it too. So it was kind of a 50/50, you know, with this. Their concern, obviously, is that, you know, if they can't get the snow off their lawn, where do they park? But they also had a lot of people that there was so much snow built up from last year. Some people could hardly get into their driveways.
Anyone else? You have a question mark on your face, Warren.
Is this the ordinance for the snow, or is it for the...
Uh, I'm not familiar. This is the ordinance...
I thought this was the snow. Prohibited parking.
This is for the trailers.
The trailers.
The trailers, okay.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Well, then forget mine.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, got that reading out. Can we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Luann moves?
I'll second it.
Warren second. Roll call, please.
Viz?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Mills?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Kentrell?
Yes.
Next is an ordinance amending the O'Wine Code of Ordinance, Chapter 3, Article 9, and Chapter 21 Parks violation. And this is the first reading. Anybody have any questions about that? Josh, did you want to add anything to that at all? Nope, all right. Hearing none, call for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Matt moves?
I'll second.
Lu second? Roll call.
Viz?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Mills?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Kentrell?
Yes.
Next, consideration of resolution filling the vacancy in the Office of Counsel at Large by appointment.
Excuse me.
Can we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Luann moves?
I'll second the motion.
Matt moves. Roll call.
Viz?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Mills?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Kentrell?
Yes.
Resolution number 5133, 2019.
All right. Um, whoops, where is it? As some of you know, I have asked Rex Erickson to fill this position until the next available election. Rex is a previous councilperson that I worked with when I was on the council. He did an excellent job. He was also on the Park and Rec Board for several years. So he knows where we're going. And I have a lot of faith in him. So Rex? You read that. Hand up that, and then you read that.
Okay. I, Rex Erickson, do solemn swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Iowa, that I will faithfully and impartially to the best of our ability to start all the duties of the office of council boards in the city of O'Wine as now and hereafter required by law.
Thank you. Very much.
I got family here. I got pictures, I got family here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Got all the crew here.
Well, let's go. Come on, kids.
They're my support now.
Fucking boys. This won't take long, too. Okay. How are you doing? Come up that way. If you move up a little bit and I'll pick this up.
Good, Deb?
Good, Deb. Thank you. One to go. Moving right along. Consideration of resolution authorizing temporary closure of public ways of grounds for O'Wine Odd Rods.
I have a question. Is this always been held on Friday night, or was it held on Saturdays?
That's a different... That's Cars and Coffee.
Oh, Cars and Coffee is on Saturday?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That answers my question.
Okay. Can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Lu move? Matt second? Roll call.
Viz?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Mills?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Kentrell?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Resolution number 5134, 2019.
Thank you. Consider a resolution to set public hearings on proposed disposal by the sale of the city's interest in 14th Second Avenue Northwest, 20th Second Avenue Northwest, 24th Second Avenue Northwest, 129 Fifth Avenue Northeast, 608 First Avenue Southeast, and 623rd Avenue Southwest, all in O'Wine, Fayette County, Iowa. Counsel, do you have any questions?
These all the properties from the demos?
Mm-hmm.
Actually, the northwest ones will be ones that will be acquiring from David Smith. And then the other three that are throughout are ones that we acquired through the 657A process. And so those three, we're trying to counsel to put those out for bid, and you'll be receiving bids on those in hopes that we can flip those or take some interest in it. If not, we will be coming back to you for a different solution.
So are we putting restrictions on as far as rental and contract sale?
Yep.
What are those restrictions then?
Uh, 10 years as a owner occupied home, and then it can't be sold on contract.
Awesome. All right. I need a motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll second it.
All right. Roll call, please.
Viz?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Mills?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Kentrell?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Resolution number 5135, 2019. Who do we have for first and second?
Fisk, Weber.
Fisk, Weber.
Fisk, Weber.
Consideration of a resolution amending the O'Wine Rental Inspection Policy. Questions?
I did have just a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Since I messed up the first one I talked about, this one I think... So I know it had been brought about carbon monoxide, how we require the fire, and we said we weren't going to do... I just think sometime we need to look at that because that is concerning, and I do have concern in that there were several people that did contact me. They said, "You have the fire, but you don't have there." And I do think that is a concern, especially in some of the older houses.
When would you like to discuss it?
We'll discuss it like the next...
Put it on a work session.
Okay.
Because we can be stricter than the state, correct?
That's correct. Anything?
All right.
Agree.
Motion?
I'll make the motion.
Matt moves?
I'll second.
Warren second. Roll call.
Viz?
Yes.
Christiansen?
Yes.
Mills?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Kentrell?
Yes.
Erickson?
I believe I probably should have abstained from this one.
Okay.
Resolution number 5136, 2019.
Thank you. Number 15, consideration of a motion entering into a three-year agreement with T.P. Anderson and Company for auditing services.
I'll make the motion.
Warren moves?
I'll second.
Lu seconds? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Next is consideration of a motion awarding a bid regarding the Street Department Building Addition and Rehabilitation Project. Anybody have any questions for Vic regarding this?
As long as both of them meet all the requirements of the city.
All right. Motion?
That's what the requirements are. I make the motion.
Warren move? Renee second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you. Seventeen, consideration of a motion authorizing signatures on task order with Fox Engineering in the amount of $87,500 for the West Water Tower painting project. Any questions regarding that? When do we get started on that?
This spring.
Yeah?
So what's this 87.5 getting us?
So, Mayor Counsel, we will be essentially stripping the paint from this current tower. And the reason that brings such a cost is that it has lead in it. And so it has to be fully contained. And then they will take that all down. They will make repairs throughout the outside and inside of the water tower. And then they will place, I believe, a couple valves. And we also have the engineer on hand. So if you want to ask more in-depth questions, that's kind of my...
Well, I guess what I'm saying is 87.5 is a down payment on all of that process? It's just a painting, isn't it? It's what? It's just a painting?
That's just a painting.
It's a painting, isn't it?
Isn't it? Go ahead.
That is the engineer's portion for the overseeing of this project.
Yes, I'm Lance Holders, planning engineering. So that, the task order on hand is for the engineering services to get bid documents put together, handle bidding, and construction administration, and inspection of the towers that's painted.
So your total is 87.5, or do you get more than that by the time this is done?
No, that's our total, I'm changing it for the...
So 87.5 for just... It's not going towards the actual construction, just...
I'm not claiming a tower payment.
Hmm. Okay. All right.
What's the total budget on this project? Our official total project estimate I came up with was about, what, 87.5?
Should have been, right.
Who's in there?
There we go.
87.5, yep.
Oh, that's where you got 87.5, was 10% of that, huh?
Well, it might end up being close to that. The 5 and 5 just continue to see, and I meant the engineering one was the specific number you gave us. That also includes the 87.5, we're gonna have someone as part of that. We'll climb the tower ahead of time and inspect it again. It hasn't been inspected in a long time. Just to make sure there's nothing else that we don't know about, that, you know, if we find something major, we might want to reconsider.
So part of your responsibility is to maintain that they're doing the job correctly, then?
That's correct.
Okay, so you're gonna be there entire process, then?
Pretty much.
Okay.
Any other questions? Motion, please?
I'll make the motion. Go ahead.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you, Lance. Consideration of motion approving the purchase of a dump truck with snowplow and hydraulics from Dunn's, truck sales in the amount of $115,255.35. Vic, are we scrapping one, or are we gaining one?
No, we've taken one out of service.
Which one were we taking out?
Uh, S9.
How long have we had that?
Twenty-plus years now.
And when's the last time we bought a snowplow?
Oh...
Wasn't it just a few years ago?
Yeah, when Jamie was here that...
Yeah, it was when I was here. Okay.
So when you take it out of service, what do you do?
If it's in usable shape, for like a slot truck, we may keep it for that, or sometimes the parks will use it. If it's in real bad shape, we just jump it out, take it out, and put it down.
Any other questions?
Was this in the budget this year?
Uh, we switched funding from a loader to this as the priorities had changed throughout the year.
So it kind of was. Just a different name, yep.
Yeah, okay. Is this one gonna be similar to the last one they purchased? The one that does East Line?
Be the same.
Okay.
The smaller trucks. It's not the tandem.
It's not the tandem?
No, tandems are two, $200,000 plus. It'd be more like the little ones of the southeast, you know, the smaller ones.
Okay. So how many bids did we get on this?
Two.
Two.
Went out to three places.
Okay.
Did do it. Only two were signed to buy. I'm not so sure the other one didn't buy the third place.
All right. Can we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Luann moves. Warren second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. All right, next, consideration of a motion authorizing signatures on an option to buy with North East Iowa Community Action for lots 5, 6, 7, Block 1, McDonald's addition to O'Wine, Fayette County, Iowa, locally known as 20th Second Avenue Northwest. Everybody have any questions? Jeremy's here to answer any questions you guys might have.
Questions? If not, our plan would be to put a three-bedroom, one-bath house on it with attached garage and use it as part of our lease purchase program, which we've done in the city of O'Wine before.
Great project.
I've got one question for you. I live in one of the three that was built in 2011. The garage. If you want to put a pickup in that garage, you realize how tight it is?
It is, yep.
Is there any way to make that, to change it a couple feet?
It could be... Living plans could be adjusted.
I would highly recommend it because... And I got the short bed. That's how much room I got behind, between the door. And I did get a treadmill. That's right. Warren, these are meant as to be affordable housing, though, instead of... Yeah, I understand that, but still, still, those people are still gonna get a pickup, I'm sure. So I'm just trying, I'm just trying to make practical, affordable housing. And I don't, I really can't see, if you do this from the inception, that it would add that much cost to it.
And you have to think about resale value, too.
And the other thing of it is, Darren, it's not always gonna stay in that. There's gonna be other people down the road buy that house.
Yep. All right. Can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Warren moves?
I'll second.
Luann second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you. Consideration of a motion authorizing signatures on an agreement for professional services with Fairgram for the city of O'Wine, and this is segment one of our trail improvements. Everybody look at the specs? Anybody have any questions? No? Motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Luann move. Renee second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you. Committee reports. Darren, library.
Dylan Gracius with his presence.
Aw.
Great news for the library board on the budget.
Oh.
They will be offering a holiday escape room during the school break from December 30th through January 3rd. It's always a good turnout there. Friends of the library, they're gonna sponsor a program that has to do with deep sea diving and exploration of sea wrecks and ship wrecks around here.
Yeah.
On January 23rd. And Chocolate Fest, obviously, has been a report to talk about. They took carpet bids to have the carpet replaced, library, and they're going with bridge showcase.
Good. Anything else?
All I got.
Thank you, Darren. Thank you, Darren. Warren, housing committee.
You got mine up there? It was Monday, so I haven't quite remembered everything we talked about. We had a lot of discussion, again, what to do, what the properties that we're getting from in this deal with Davy Duhon's. And in this, I thought, we need everybody in the city involved in helping us out how to make, how to improve this city. And I guess some of it is, is we're going to have some of these empty lots, and we need to get construction of rental properties in that $900,000 range. We don't have that in this town, and it's, those are better rentals, and I think there would be times that people are going to want to rent. The millennials are, what, 50% of them are renting? So, and we have the jobs in town that have people that can't afford rent like that. We have a lot of people making payments like that. But in order to do that, I suggested that we try to set up a meeting with the landlord association to see if we can get, have a discussion with them, how we can get them on board with maybe tearing down some of the properties and building new properties in place of what they got. So, hopefully, we can have that discussion. Haven't heard back anything. Brett's nodding has had...
I've already talked to them.
Okay.
I'll be talking to them at the meeting.
So, we're still working forward with that. And then the other thing was, we talked about what we're going to, what we want to do, accomplish this next year, and we're pretty well going to have our hands full just trying to figure out what to do with the housing that we're taking over. Outside of that, that was pretty well, pretty well... You got anything else, Luann?
Well, we did have discussion a little bit, and we've brought it up before, of possibly having, looking into building on a 50-foot lot, which it's a 60-foot lot now, and if there was interest that there could be...
A tiny house?
A tiny house, a tinier house than most.
Actually, there wouldn't be a tiny house. They could build the same-sized house that's on the lots now. The 50-foot restriction, it's a 7,000 square foot, is another restriction, and a 50 by 140-foot is 7,000 square feet. So, 50 by 140 fits.
Yeah.
So, it just, at some point in time, it got changed to 60 feet, and at that point, it completely said that you couldn't build on it if you had a 50 by 140-foot lot, and there's a lot of them in this town.
And we had a lot of discussion on the size of lots that people want. Do they want a huge yard? So, we had a lot of discussion.
I'd like to thank, Luann has never answered me whether she's going to be on the committee. She doesn't have to be on the city council to be on the committee for next year, but I'd like for her to continue there to do that.
Well, thank you, Warren. I will consider that.
Take it under advisement.
I will. I'll take it under advisement.
And if she doesn't consider to be on there, I want to thank her for being on there.
Well, you're welcome. Well, I love Owine.
All right.[1652.01]